All right, thank you so much. Today is Tuesday, January 16th, 2024. The time is 6:00 p.m. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Ms. Buchanan, can we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Maldonado.
Here.
Councilmember Buchalato.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Cordis.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
She did notify that she was going to be ill this evening.
Vice Mayor Mendoza.
Here.
Mayor Walter.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you so much. At this time, we'll open up our call to the public. Our call to the public for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I see online we have a hand raised as well as I received a paper request to speak. Ms. Kathy Lehman, I'll call you forward first in the order as received.
Thank you very much, Mayor, council members. I'm Kathy Lehman. I'm a resident of Florence. I'm speaking to you tonight as a member of the Community Services Advisory Board. Been on the board since February of 2022. During that time, the board has earnestly tried to get an art program going for the town of Florence through three different community services director, Hezekiah Allen, Allison Felice, and now Mr. King. I'm happy to say that we're in the final discussion of the updated draft for the Community Services Advisory Board Public Art Program. This public art program only allows for artwork to be considered for town-owned properties such as buildings and parks. There's never been any money budgeted for this program. As budget time is getting near, I've asked Mr. King, and I'm publicly asking the council, that a minimum of $10,000 be allocated by the council for the program through the Community Services Department. I know that this program is near to a couple of you here, and we are really hoping on this board that we could get it launched soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for speaking this evening and for your service on the board. Our next speaker, Ms. Courtney Ramirez.
Hi, good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you. So I wanted to speak about a couple of things on the agenda. I see that there's a public hearing to increase our rates for water and wastewater fees. I really wish that would have been quashed and just thrown out when it was first on the agenda. Again, with the economy as bad as it is, I just don't think it's a good idea to be raising any more rates for people. So I'd like everybody to vote no on that when it comes. And I wanted to speak about that because sometimes there's audio problems and I'm not able to speak on the phone. So, and then I also wanted to thank you guys for putting it on the agenda for the work sessions, to have them zoomed. And it looks like adoption has probably already been chosen, but I'd also like to suggest to also include allowing the public to speak, another small public comment portion before you guys start your work agendas or your work sessions. You guys often talk about wanting to hear from the public, and I think it's appropriate to hear from us during work sessions. And I also think it's a good idea to post those onto your YouTube channel and website once they are done so that people can reference them. Because again, people work, or they're, you know, not able to attend, and these work sessions are important, and it's just another avenue to give the people an opportunity to see what happens during those work sessions. So I'd like to throw those suggestions in when it comes time for you guys to discuss. And I wanted to thank you guys for even wanting to put that on the agenda. I've known, I've asked several times, I don't know who else has, but I do appreciate you guys even considering that, because those of us that do attend really like to know what you guys are thinking about and discussing during work sessions. And I also wanted to speak about Territory Square. There's a lot happening with that, and, you know, we all know that that's in a floodplain, and you guys have it on the agenda tonight to allocate half a million dollars practically for the well. Well, what is going on with, you know, working on those banks or doing whatever to help prevent flooding in Territory Square? Is anything happening with that first before all this other money is going to be invested in Territory Square? Worst thing is to spend all the money and have it flooded. So just a few concerns, and I look forward to the rest of the meeting.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else either in person or online that would like to speak? All right, we'll go ahead and close the first call to the public. There will be a second call to the public. Next, we have item 6A. This is a public hearing to accept public comments on land use assumptions and infrastructure improvement plan for development impact fees. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. Tonight, we have Carson Bice standing by to do a presentation, a quick little presentation on the infrastructure improvement plan and the land use assumptions. As you know, we started this last year in October 25th. The draft infrastructure improvement plan, and IIP, was given to you to review, and we went back and did some adjustments to it. So now we have currently a new one. And I just want to let everyone know that this is a living, breathing document that is in constant change, so if there's something that needs to be adjusted, we will be looking at that. If council has any comments, we will be looking at that as well. So at this time, I'll go ahead and turn this over to Carson.
Can you answer my questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Becky. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Carson Bice, Tishler Bice, you may remember, I was out, I think it was the third week of July, to give the first presentation on the IIP and land use assumptions. I know you guys have a crowded agenda tonight, and my presentation isn't exactly quick. It's 31 slides, if you remember. So I would defer to you in terms of whether you want me to go through the entire presentation again, or just hit some high points and then take questions.
Council, what are your views? Okay. At this time, yes, go through those high points. The full presentation is available and ready, and then any questions or comments that we have, we'll ask, as well as we'll open it up.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to share my screen. So you should be able to see my slideshow at this point. A little bit about us, for those who maybe the audience are watching at home, we specialize in impact fees and fiscal and economic impact analysis. We're based in Bethesda, Maryland, and Boise, Idaho. We're the national leader in conducting impact fees around the country, as well as Arizona. And you can see here our substantial Arizona city talent experience with impact fees. As Becky mentioned, and I like the term she used, a living, breathing document, as we talked about in July, the land use assumptions, or the presentation you heard in July, talked about how the Impact Fee Act changed in Arizona in 2012. And as part of those changes, there are three integrated work products that have to be reviewed separately, or two of those have to be reviewed separately as part of this process. The first one is what we call the land use assumptions and the IIP, also known as infrastructure improvement plan. Both of these have to look out 10 years and have to be approved by the elected officials. Once the land use assumptions and IIP are approved, we then move into the second adoption process and public hearing process, and that is for the development fee report itself. So what you have in front of you tonight are the land use assumptions and the infrastructure improvement plan, and this shows the adoption timeline. From start to finish, it's 225 days, and that's the longest adoption process of any state in the United States. And on the 11th, there was a, the town posted the notice of public hearing for the land use assumptions. And today, on the January 16th, we're having the actual public hearing. We have until February 20th of this year to either approve or disapprove the land use assumptions. And at that point, we would then set the date for the public hearing on the development fee report itself, okay? Then on February 21st, we would advertise the public hearing on the development fee report. And on April 21st, we would have a public hearing on the development fee report. Then on May 6th, we would either approve or disapprove the development fees. And then after a waiting period of 75 days, those impact fees or development fees would go into effect. So between tonight and February 20th, we can still make changes to this document. And that's why it was, I think it was poignant that Becky said it was a living, breathing document. And recently, between the posting of the notice of this public hearing and tonight, the town has received some minor comments, questions from the home builders. And we are in the process of addressing those. It's fairly straightforward. The comments are not complicated. And the final, or the next version of this document you see on February 20th will have those changes and anything that comes out of any review that you all have or any comments that happened tonight prior to February 20th. To hit some high notes, the population increase that we're projecting over the next 10 years is, in terms of year-on, population is slightly over 22,000. Of that, 7,000 is seasonal. We have an increase of over 12,000 new housing units. The majority of those would be single-family. And then the non-residential development increase is about 4,670 jobs, which results in about 1.8 million square feet of new residential space. I'm going to touch base on each of these fees quickly. On parks and rec, we're looking at a townwide service area. A key point here is that there is no land component to this proposed impact fee and IIP. The focus will be on improving existing parkland. Over the next 10 years, we are projecting demand for $18 million worth of new park improvement need over the next 10 years based on that development projection. This shows the draft IIP. One thing that is going to be removed is the park maintenance shop, and that was an oversight on our fault, or on our side, because we do not have a buildings component as part of the park impact fee. And even though we're not talking about development fees at this point, it is important that we show you, so that you have a basis for making a rational decision on the IIP. If you adopt this, well, what does this mean in terms of fees? It is important to note that as part of the development fee report, we also have to grant offsets and credits for either dedicated revenue sources or other revenues that may go to offset the impact fee amounts. So the draft impact fees we have for parks, for a single-family house, are about 1,500 per unit, which is a decrease over your current fee amounts. We're showing decreases under all the fee amounts, or all the land use types for parks and recreation, which may even be reduced further once we get into the offsets and credits. One of the things you requested as part of the last meeting in July was we, us and staff recommended, because the town had not spent, or had not found things to spend money on as, at this point, was the elimination of the police impact fee, town council asked that we reconsider that, and so it's back in this version of the IIP. And the components are additional station square footage as well as vehicles. And we are projecting the demand for police infrastructure at slightly over $15 million over the next 10 years. This shows the police IIP, 15 million in expenditures for a joint police fire substation, future police station space, as well as additional vehicles. And this shows the draft fees. Proposed fees are increasing by about a third, up to about $1,187 for a single-family unit. There's also a component for fire that includes station square footage and apparatus. We project growth-related expenditures for apparatus and facilities at about $29 million. The fire IIP also totals $29 million, which would be the joint police substation, future station space, as well as overflow apparatus storage, as well as additional apparatus. The proposed fees for fire are a substantial increase over your current fees, about $1,341 higher than the current fees. And in this draft, a single-family fee would be 22,000, excuse me, $2,296. We're also having utilities as part of this. With water, there are two service areas, that is the Florence utility benefit area as well as the Territory Square benefit area. Components include transmission, storage, and supply. For water transmission within the Florence utility area, we're showing an IIP of about $4.8 million. Territory Square has water improvements totaling about $5.4 million. And then the draft fees are going down for water within the Florence utility service area quite substantially. And then within the Territory Square utility area, this would be a new service area compared to your current IIP and development fee study. And those proposed fees are quite substantial, given the amount of infrastructure that's needed relative to the number of demand units or development that would be within that service area. Wastewater is very similar. There's the Florence utility benefit area as well as the Territory Square. The components are collection as well as treatment. This shows the IIP for the Florence utility benefit area totals about $1 million for collection. And then Territory Square, the components there are for the Phase 1 and Phase 2 wastewater projects. That totals about $4 million. And within the benefit area for Florence, the fees are going down, similar to water. But Territory Square has a substantially higher rate structure, given the amount of improvements necessary for that benefit area compared to the amount of development that's projected. And then finally, streets, we have a townwide service area. It's for arterial road capacity as well as intersection improvements. Skip this, this is just our demand model. The road IIP is about $28.5 million, and these are the projects that we anticipate spending the money on. And that results in fees that are slightly lower than what the town has as part of its current land use assumptions, IIP, and development fees. And again, as I mentioned earlier, those may be reduced further based on the offsets that happen as part of the next phase. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you for bringing that presentation forward again. Council, do you have any new questions or comments? All right, I am not seeing any. Ms. Jimenez, would you like to recap the next dates coming up?
Certainly recap the next dates. All righty. On February the 20th, we'll have a meeting to approve or disapprove the IIP, and the interim will be working on adjustments. We'll provide the public notice on February 21st, public hearing on the proposed fee report April 1st. You can approve or disapprove the fee report on May the 6th, and then we have a 75-day waiting period and potentially have the development fee adopted and provided effective August the 1st.
All right, thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Bice, for joining us this evening. And we'll see you next time. Citizens, if there's any questions or comments, please send them in. Care of Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next item on the agenda.
I'm sorry, Mayor, sorry. We have to open and close the public hearing.
Oh, that's, yeah, thank you for that. That's okay. It wasn't noted the way that I had it in my notes, so my apologies. I'm opening the public hearing at this time, so if there's anybody that has any questions or comments, please come forward. And closing it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I had it jotted for the next one, and I didn't scribe it in for the first one, so my apologies. Item B is public hearing to accept public comment on recommended intention to increase water and wastewater rates and fees and possible adoption of resolution number 189024, which is a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting and amending the fee schedule of terms, rates, fees, and charges for the town-owned water and wastewater utilities effective March 1st, 2024. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council, we have a utility rate study that was provided by Will Dan, Dan Jackson, who's been doing our rate studies for a long, long time and knows all about Florence. We have a stepped rate structure that provides incremental increases in order to lessen the impact upon the utility users. This is the second year of the rate increase, which is a cumulative total of about 4% more, a little bit higher than that, maybe 4.2, et cetera. But we try to keep these rates as low as possible. But in order to do that, we also have to support our utility. So I was asked to provide more information when this first came up, so I provided you extensive detailed information on our utility funds and how, what kind of fund balance they have and all the operations and maintenance. So this is a public hearing to accept public comment on the rates themselves, and then also to adopt the rates if council so chooses.
Thank you so much. So I am going to open up the public hearing at this time. So if there is any questions on the presentation or any clarifications, please raise your hand Okay, thank you, Chris. All right, Courtney, you are unmuted.
Hi. So again, I am not in favor of any more rate increases for the people right now. You guys have been raising rates for practically everything over the last couple of years, and I don't think it's appropriate to raise any more rates for a while. So that's how I feel about it. I would encourage you all to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, council, questions or comments? Councilmember Buchalato.
I just wanted to thank Becky for all the information. You know I'm the number one thorn in your side when it comes to raising rates. I don't like it, but I understand. And I know a little bit now saves us a lot later, and we have to support what's coming and what's growing, and it's happening. And so in order to keep our rates low, I know a little bit goes a long way. So thank you for providing me with the extra information, and I'm sorry for always being...
Oh, no, anytime. I'm happy to provide the information. I just want council to know that on a daily basis, things are changing in Florence. We're growing and we're experiencing growing pains, but at the same time, we try to be as kind as we can to our rate payers.
Councilmember Neal.
I believe, I said it before, but I remember when I first got on council, I remember telling myself that I would never vote to raise any taxes whatsoever. But then I got on council and learned that somebody's got to be the kind of adult and realize that where rates are raising on everything, they're also raising on the town. So although it sucks to raise rates, it's a have-to. It's not like we're up here, "Hee, we're going to take this money home." No, it's stuff that has to happen for this town to keep functioning. So, I mean, we all live in the same town. We all have to pay the same tax raises, so it's something that's necessary. It's a necessary evil, what I call it. I don't like it, but I understand it, and I know it has to happen. So just to say that to try to ease some of those citizens' minds.
Does anybody else have anything that they'd like to add? Councilmember Maldonado.
I just wanted to say I hope that the public understands why we're doing this. All you have to do is look at the news and see what's going on in the U.S. with water and water conservation. And some of the other things is just because you don't see the pipes underneath the ground doesn't mean that they're not going bad. So every time you open up your phone and see like an alert saying there's a water break, these will hopefully help some of those things and before they do break, and are preventative maintenance. So just keep that in the back of your mind. Just because you don't see it doesn't mean it's not corroding or withering away. We always have to find ways to improve our stuff and basically try to keep things from happening so we're less reactive and be more proactive. Thank you.
And Ms. Jimenez, we do appreciate the communication and transparency throughout this entire process. It's never an easy decision to have to make, but when we're looking at providing the best services and ensuring that the water's there when you turn on your tap and the toilets are flushing and we're moving forward, it is a critical component.
Thank you.
So with that, we've opened the public hearing. I will open it one more time in case there's anybody else that still would like to speak. It's still open. Closing it. And a possible adoption. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Motion to adopt resolution number 1890, that's 24, resolution of the town of Florence.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And all opposed? And motion carries.
Thank you.
Item C is recognition and special thanks to Waste Management for being a 2023 Make a Difference Day sponsor. Mr. Mendeville. I don't think I have ever said your last name, sir.
Good evening, council, vice mayor, mayor. At this time, we'd like to recognize Waste Management for their support in our Florence Makes a Difference Day back in October. They sponsored... They sponsored four roll-off dumpsters on this day, two in Florence-Anthon, two in downtown Florence. So it helped with 16 projects that were accomplished on Make a Difference Day. And just to let you know, both dumpsters were at capacity in downtown Florence. So it was a great, it was a success. Rick Davies, if he's here tonight from Waste Management, okay? Come on up, we got you a little something. So thank you from Waste Management.
This is for you.
And we, okay, we'll walk this way and take a picture. I just want to say on behalf of Waste Management, it's a privilege trying to be able to better serve the community of Florence. And coming from, growing up in a small town, I know that all support is, can be very beneficial at times. So hopefully we'll be able to help with things in the future.
Thank you.
We would like to continue with item C, which is an additional presentation regarding the Make a Difference Day.
Yes, we got another recognition for Florence Copper. So Sophie, I know she's here. Where is she at? Come on up, Sophie. Florence Copper has been open to help whether it be special events or any of our team programming. They have been a great partner throughout the years, so we thank you, Sophie, for always helping out. Also, as you guys saw in Florence Makes a Difference, they sponsored all those T-shirts, the I Heart Florence T-shirts, that a lot of people have in town. So thank you. And just to let you know, there was an estimated 130 volunteers on this day. So it was a great turnout. Like I mentioned in the last presentation, 16 projects that were accomplished on this day. So thank you, Sophie. And this is for you guys in your office.
There we go. Thank you so much for this recognition. Florence Copper is so proud and honored to be here tonight to receive recognition for our sponsorship of the 2023 Florence Makes a Difference Day. Part of our commitment to responsible mineral development is supporting the communities in closest proximity to our project, and that, of course, includes Florence. We were thrilled to support Florence Makes a Difference Day and donate some I Heart Florence shirts to the volunteers. We were also so thrilled to participate by volunteering several members of our team on that wonderful day. We just want to thank the Town of Florence for putting together all these wonderful events for our community, and we look forward to continuing to partner with you to support these events and initiatives that make Florence even, an even better place to live. Thank you again.
All right. Our next item will be going, we're gonna recognize our Junior Prada, 91st Junior Prada Parade winners just past Thanksgiving. Just a little info on Junior Prada this year. We had a total of 31 registered this year. Special thank you to Florence Historic Foundation on assistance with recruiting the rodeo participants into the parade. So thank you, Florence Historic Foundation. It was a great turnout for the public. And thank you for the judges, advisory board members, who are the judges, excuse me, for judging on this day. Also, there was a new thing they did this year. We changed the route up, so that was a big, new thing. So thank you guys for that. At this time, I'll call each group up. We'll give you your plaque. It's with a picture in your name, and we can have you go take a picture with our council members. All right, so Junior Prada. Thank you Florence High School Marching Band for best marching band. We've been trying to get them for many years, so they were here this year. Florence High School Marching Band. All right. Our next one, best motorized entry, Box O Ranch, Beef is Going Up, Tanner Foster. Thank you, Box O Ranch, thank you. For best commercial, Florence Copper, Floco Riders. Florence Copper once again. Thank you Florence Copper. Floco Riders, thank you. Okay, our best civic entry, Florence K8 and JHS, Ruben Gutierrez, David Lewis. Come on up. All right, our next entry was best Western authentic vehicle, Camp Encouragement. Diana Flair of the, Camp Encouragement. Thank you, Camp Encouragement. Our next entry, I'm not sure if they made it tonight, but best equestrian, Lost Dutchman Royalty. Looks like they couldn't make it tonight, so we will get that to them. So tired views from Lost Dutchman Royalty. All right, our final award for Junior Prada, which is the Posey Foster Award. It's our main award, it's a tradition for Junior Prada. And that one's gonna go, they've been a long time. They actually have like 10 entries, so that 31 entries. They got like 10 entries and one registration, a parade entry. Please welcome, all the way from Phoenix, the Shriners of Phoenix. Come on up, fellas. Every year. Thank you once again, Shriners from Phoenix, for coming down tonight. Okay, we'll move on to our next item. And once again, thank you, one more round of applause for all our participants for Junior Prada. And thank you for being here tonight. Our next item will be our Holiday Parade, which is the very next week. So back-to-back parades. This year, like I mentioned earlier, we did have a new route through the back roads. It's pretty much in reverse, so that was a new thing for this year. Thank you to all the participants. We had officially 28 registered, 28 registered, and a great turnout from the public. So thank the public for coming out. And once again, thank you to the advisory board members, who are also judges on this parade also. At this time, we'll be recognizing our best marching group. Once again, back-to-back tonight, Florence High School Marching Band. All right, once again, Florence High School Marching Band, thank you. All right, our next entry is for public safety. Please welcome Florence Police Department Chief Walls. All right, once again, most public safety, Florence Police Department. All right, our next category, this is the first year we kinda changed, we changed our categories up a little bit to freshen it up. So this year, this is gonna be our first one for our most festive category, and we'd like to welcome Santan Skye's Girl Scout Service Team. Come on down with the most festive. They're selling cookies right now? Once again, thank you Santan Skye's Girl Scout Service Team. Thank you, guys. So they say that you guys do have cookies? So if you guys feel like to get some cookies for them? All right, our next one, biggest and brightest. Please welcome, from where I grew up, Eloy, Arizona, Eloy Fire Department. Come on down. Thank you once again, Eloy Fire Department. Thank you once again, Eloy Fire Department, biggest and brightest. All right, our next one, like I mentioned earlier, this is a new category, which the mayor made a choice, mayor's choice right here, let's please welcome American Legion Riders Post Number Nine. Thank you, American Legion Riders Post Number Nine, mayor's choice. All right, our next one, this is a public vote for the People's Champ, the People's Champion right here, both voted on our town's social media page, with a total of 210 votes, likes, we didn't do hearts or any of the other, it was all about the likes, we'd like to welcome Carla Ruth, the People's Champ for Town of Florence. All right, once again, People's Champion, Carla Ruth, thank you guys. And that's, that's all our parade participants, thank you to all the participants for coming out tonight, thank you guys.
Oh, they're doing.
Wow, the line for cookies right now is insane in that parking lot. Gonna be a lot of happy Girl Scouts and people. Thank you guys. All right, our next item is the presentation on the 2023 Junior Parada Rodeo by the Historic Florence Foundation, Mr. Paul King, I'll let you kick it off.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, tonight we have Bill Foster with the Florence Foundation, who's going, the Historic Foundation, who's gonna go ahead and give us an update and show a video for you with his update. So Bill, we'd like to invite you up here to say a few words and get us kicked off with the video.
All right, well, thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you for giving us some time this evening to kind of recap the 91st Annual Florence Junior Parada. Of course, it was a wonderful weekend weather-wise, I think that's always good when we can bring people to town because of our beautiful weather here. We started out on Friday, the contestants started to arrive November 23rd, on the 24th at 10:00 AM, we had probably 220 contestants that competed for the weekend, over 430 outs is what we call it, and that's individual runs that these kids performed during the rodeo. Twenty-five of them actually participated in the parade, hats off to the Recreation Department on a great parade that they did put on this year, and we hope that we can continue to help them grow this parade and get it back to what we remember years ago being one of the bigger parades. On the 25th, we began at 10:00 AM, and after the parade was concluded, everybody reconvened at the, to the Whittler Arena for two days of rodeo, the grand entry went off without a hitch at 1:00 PM. We had approximately five food vendors, 11 merchandise vendors, spread out over the three days. We anticipated we had at least 1,500 spectators between Friday and Sunday, and then on Saturday, we had live music entertainment by Chauncey Jones, we also had a kids' entertainment zone, which consisted of a rock wall, mechanical bull, kid-friendly axe-throwing, a dunk tank, and a shooting gallery. I think all the kids really enjoyed having something else to do out there than to watch a rodeo. On Sunday morning, we kicked it off with a cowboy church service at 7:00 AM, and we began the parada at 8 o'clock, and we concluded around 2:00 PM. It was a great weekend for all, I gotta commend my team here, the board for the Historic Florence Foundation for all the hard work and effort that they did to help put this together. I do want to mention that at the beginning of the year, we started a youth series program for local kids to come out and ride sheep, calves, and steers, and this year, we actually had 10 of those contestants for our sheep division that actually rode in the Junior Parada. So we are continuing that as we move forward so that the local kids here get a little bit of taste of what it's like to be a part of a rodeo, and the oldest rodeo in the world, the youth rodeo in the world, so we just have a little short slideshow we'd like to show. Or video. Yeah, apologize, there's no audio. Who you see here are the Copper State Renegades kicked off the grand entry with the colors, we had some visiting royalty from Queen Creek and Apache Junction, these are just some pictures, there's Chauncey Jones doing the boot scramble for the kids, and some of the presentations of the prizes that they were given. We had Ross Tople on the dunk tank, he raised quite a bit of money for the Florence Cheerleaders. And those were two of our 10 mutton busters that were part of the rodeo. And that's our winner for the first place mutton busting. On the second day, we had the Rough Stock Division that the AJRA provided, and all these cowboys are really tough young cowboys, and girls. Those were all-around winners for the weekend right there, the boys and the girls. So that concludes the video, and I want to thank everyone here at the town that helped us get to this point, and we hope to continue to bring more events to the facility here and showcase our great little town, so can I answer any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? I know we have comments, but let me, questions and comments, go ahead.
Or comments.
I just wanted to say thank you guys again, what you guys do is really great for our community, and it's been so nice to have you guys bring this back. Thank you guys for all you do and for all the support that you give our youth in the community, so.
Well, thank you.
Councilmember Cortez?
I just wanted to also thank you for all that you do, and I just, again, I know I said this last year, and I'll probably keep saying it, this is a great example of how the right partnerships can help this town really grow, and putting this in the hands of someone who actually knows how to run a rodeo and understands all the things that none of us understand, we know how to show up and sit in the stands and root for all of them, it is definitely very clear that you guys are doing an awesome job watching it grow, watching the excitement and all the new events that you guys are doing, I love seeing the little list of kids every time you put out, how often is it, like every month, once a month?
Once a month currently, and starting to get more, busier and busier as the spring comes, so.
And I sit there and I'm like, oh, I know that kid, or, oh, I know that kid, so I love it, you guys are doing a great job, and I wish you nothing but continued success.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do for our community, and we're looking forward to continued partnerships.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, Members of Council, I just want to echo that, the partnership that we've had and the relationship that we have with these folks on a regular basis is fantastic, and we certainly are after more and want to use this as a benchmark, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Item seven is our consent agenda, and all items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is acceptance of the public improvements infrastructure into the warranty period for National Way, Phase Two in Unit 30A-1 in Anthem at Merrill Ranch, starting January 16th, 2024. Item B is approval of Amendment Three to the On-Call Engineering Services Agreement with Hazen and Sawyer, dated January 21st, 2020. Item C, approval of the Amendment Two on the On-Call Engineering Services Agreement with Sunrise Engineering, dated January 21st, 2020. Item D is approval of Amendment Three to the On-Call Engineering Services Agreement with Westland Resources, dated January 21st, 2020. Item E is discussion approval disapproval of the Warrant Register of Demands, ending December 31st, 2023, in the amount of $4,653,032 and no cents. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda, is there anybody that would like any item removed at this time? Seeing no such movement, we do need a motion.
Make a motion, we approve consent agenda as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item Eight A is new business, discussion approval disapproval to enter into a professional services agreement with Matrix New World Engineering for the development of the well sighting, well drilling sites, engineering, and well equipment documents necessary for the construction of Well Six, utilizing the City of Buckeye's Cooper On-Call Engineering and Architectural Services Contract Number 2022003.25, any amount not to exceed $456,160.50. Mr. Chrisalis, I see you are on. Okay, hang on one moment, you are unmuted, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, the item tonight is the item that we've been discussing at the work session and at the award related to the Multi-Generational Center, and all things related to the development of what we call the Territory Square Zoning District. This area is in need of additional infrastructure to be, meet industry standards as it relates to storage capacity, well capacity, booster capacity, and so this is just one of several contracts that will be awarded to support Territory Square Zoning District and the Multi-Generational Center. This is specifically for drilling the well, what we call Well Six, and will be up in the Territory Square Zoning District. As part of this project, we'll be looking at the exact location as it relates to, again, hydrologic impacts and other things that are related to the Gila River Indian water settlement, so that's all comprehensively part of this project. So that would be, this will be the design and future engineering services required for outfitting this well. Without other any questions tonight on the item?
Council, do you have any questions regarding this agenda item? Councilmember Buchalado?
So I saw under the dollar amount, it was for like $414,000, but we budgeted $450,000, so we're coming in under budget, I just wanted to clarify that.
Did you look at the actual budget of $450,000, or are you looking at the extended price with contingency?
Well, it says on the dollar amount in the contract, $414,690.55, but then it says, and next to it in red, budget $450,000, so is that just in case something changes in the next?
Well, again, the item, the town is currently contracted to, with an outside attorney counsel, to look at, again, the effects of the Gila River Indian settlement as well as the maintenance area, so with that, as this is pretty new, especially for the Town of Florence, we may need additional engineering support in order to provide the testing as far as a hydrologic opinion, a, I believe it is a corner depression test, it may need to be several additional tests that we didn't perform as recently as the last eight years for Well Two B, we may be doing additional testing. So there is some contingency for the what-ifs as it relates to additional analysis that may need to be performed, both as it impacts hydraulically in the area of the well being drilled and how it will service on the booster station, as well as hydrologically.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions? All right. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Cortez?
Mr. Salas, could you, we had a question earlier during Call to Public about us going ahead and moving forward with this project before we deal with the floodplain. If you could just give some clarification as to why we would be working on this instead of the floodplain first, so that the public understands one kind of doesn't have nothing to do with the other almost.
Thank you, Councilman Cortez, for the question, or the person who asked the question during Call to the Public. They are largely unrelated, that's fair to say. We have not determined where this well will be drilled. So it is possible, it is possible that while the conditional letter of map revision, letter of map revision process is going on on the one side, that the well could be, end up being sited on the floodplain. But as everybody's aware, based on the long lead, this well will take us almost three years to complete as an entire project. We want to be starting it as soon as possible. So if we get going on the design and the construction is not finished in the floodplain, we still can raise the specific area. There's still the ability to keep this project moving forward regardless of that other project. We don't, we don't want to take any type of unnecessary risks, and we are not. But at the same time, we want to make sure that once given direction, that we are moving forward. And this well is, this well and the additional infrastructure related to the water is much needed in this area for anything to develop. So if the council gives direction to, again, Director Harmer to do an advertisement for the parcel that was previously advertised, MDR-1, if we build the Multi-Generational Center in the Territory Square Zoning District, or if any other project's going to go in that area, this well is already needed. So we do not want to delay that. But there is, there is no, there is no unnecessary risk with running these two projects concurrently.
Thank you for that clarification. Seeing no further questions or comments, with that, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve item eight A as written.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries. Council, for item eight B, Ms. Garcia is unable to join us this evening. I did have a request to place it upon the next agenda. If you would like to do that, I would need somebody to make that motion. Okay, then we are going to go ahead and open up this item. And Ms. Garcia, again, is not here, so based upon what is inside of it, I'm opening discussions. Councilmember Bucialato?
I, I do agree. The only thing that I would change is, I do agree that it would be nice to hear the public's input at a work session. I would say to do one, one call to the public in the beginning, just to see maybe where people are or have them submit by a certain date or time, by email or some sort of way. Because, you know, sitting on the other end and wanting to speak at some of those work sessions early on would have saved a lot of time, you know, during a lot of the council meetings. And I've been on that other end, and I wanted to speak so bad and I couldn't. And it's, it's hard because we want to, not we, but I, as a council member, would love to hear what the public thinks about certain things. And not everybody can make it in a perfect world. We want everybody here, but sometimes they just can't, whether it's work, kids, COVID, whatever it is. But it would be nice to have some, some sort of input, whether it's by email, submit your, your input by this date or time, or whether it's allowing them to speak at the public. I think one call to the public is fair, and I agree with moving this forward tonight.
Okay, other comments?
I would agree with Nicole that, I think that allowing the public to speak at our work sessions is a good idea, probably in the beginning, because then that's when they can give us their opinions and their views and even information that we may not be aware of to help us during our work session. I have, for a long time, never understood why work sessions, planning and zoning, while, why none of those are available through Zoom and especially work sessions not only available through Zoom, but even just aired so that the public can watch it, because it's a work session discussing what is going to come before council and that we'll be taking future action on. So it's very important that the public get to see what the discussion was. So when the actual item comes before council, they've been a part of that discussion, even if they weren't, you know, necessarily sitting at the table. So I do think it's very important that our public have the opportunity to see that. I understand that it requires some additional staff time and is going to be an expense to us, but it is something that our public has been asking for for quite some time. And I think we'll find some great value in it, in getting our public to engage. We've been asking for that, and I think this would be a great way. So I'm looking for it to be zoomed. I would prefer for it also to be available live. But if not, definitely that the recording be posted on our website and then also the Call to the Public at the beginning of the work session.
Perfect. And I don't necessarily know that there would be an additional expense because we could have creativity in regards to how we staff and flexing time and things of that nature with day-to-day operations.
Mayor.
Councilmember Neal?
So when I talked to, when I brought this up, I talked to Courtney Ramirez. We had a conversation about it. And, okay, but talking about it, the call to public. And the only reason why I'm saying to very limited comment during the work session because of the time and the people that are working overtime. As far as us, that's something we signed up for. But other people working overtime and doing a job for their benefit, you have to call the publics during our council meetings. I mean, I don't mind at all public comment at a work session. I really don't, as long as it's short. At the beginning, to where it doesn't prolong the meetings. So that's just kind of my input that I put in.
Councilmember Maldonado?
So I kind of see, I see where Councilmember Neal, what he's talking about. So I think, in my opinion, like a good compromise would be if you are working late and were able to make the last part of it, as long as you get to say your, say whatever you have to say at one of the, either the first or the beginning, or at the, at the end of the, I think that'd be a good compromise. Yeah, just speak once for, for.
At the beginning would be better. That way you get everybody's comments to where it ain't logged out at the end. Because if people have a bunch of questions toward the end, you can show up at the council meeting and voice those questions. As long as it's at the beginning, get everything out of the way.
Because we're talking about just the work session. So it's not anything that we're going to vote on at that time, so they would have the other opportunity at the council meeting to, to talk about it again.
Okay, that is fair. Vice Mayor, do you have anything to add? All right, so this is recap of what I've heard. We would like to make the following changes, and we would need a motion doing so. Add work sessions where as citizens can submit comments via email by a certain day or time prior to the meeting. They can also speak at the beginning of the work session with a Call to the Public. The work session will be available via Zoom, and it will also be aired on our town website, Channel 11. And did I miss anything else? Yes, at the beginning.
And recorded and on YouTube?
They would be recorded, and they would be aired, and they would be listed on our website, as well as aired on Channel 11.
I would say that they're, if they're not going to attend and not going to partake in Zoom, that their questions need to be to staff by day of meeting morning, because that way that question can get sent to council. Because if we get questions sent to us at four o'clock in the afternoon, it's hard for, or a lot of times we get things set here as we walk up to the dais and we haven't ever seen it before. So I think it would be best if those questions either needed to be submitted the day before or by first thing that morning of the meeting. And I don't know what that means.
The day before?
Day before. I'm good with that one.
That way we can have staff appropriately have time to give the information.
I agree, because a lot of us that work during the day, we can't check.
Well, then you got to give staff.
The email, and we need to ask questions too, and then they have to have time to get it to us. So I think the business day before would be fair for everybody. So council has time to review and the staff have time to get it together.
All right, I agree. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 1892-24.
With the following changes?
Yep, with the, I was thinking of all the following changes. So with the following changes to air, can I just say with the following changes? I don't have to list them, right? Because, okay, because I didn't write them all down. With the following changes, amending the Florence Town Council rules of procedure effective February 16, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And all opposed? The motion carries. We have our second Call to the Public this evening. If there's anybody that would like to speak, come up to the podium or raise your hand virtually. Ms. Ramirez, go ahead.
Good evening, again, guys. I wanted to thank you for putting that on the agenda and talking about it. I think it's really important. The more community involvement we have as a town, I believe, the better. And, you know, tonight was wonderful. These meetings are great to have, these presentations and honoring people and giving out the awards and all that. Tonight, that took a half hour. So is there also a way that maybe we can discuss and add to the agenda? Maybe those presentations go after the meeting? So that we can get down to business and then do all the presentations at the end of the meeting? And I also want to encourage our town, our residents, you know, so many people complain about things on Facebook or just out, out, but, you know, they don't come. They're not participating in the meetings, and they're not taking advantage of public hearings and Call to Council. So I just want to encourage the residents to attend these meetings. Not be afraid to get to that podium or get on Zoom and take advantage of Call to the Public. This is our town too, and we need to be vocal and voice how we feel about what we want with our town. So I encourage everybody to come to these meetings and be seen and be a voice for what you want and for our town. That is such a big thing for us to take advantage of that. And that's all I wanted to say in closing. I hope everybody has a good night.
You as well. Thank you. Ms. Bedford? Sorry, Chris.
Would you like to unmute, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Yes, yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say that the meeting went well. And I just wanted to really let the residents know that it's very important to come to the meetings and be able to voice their opinion, only because you don't come to a meeting on just what you want. This is for everybody in Florence. So that's all I needed to say.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? With that, we are going to go ahead and close Call to the Public and open up Call to the Council. Councilmember Neal?
I didn't have much. I just wanted to say a little something to the presentations that we do at the meetings. Sometimes it can be a whole lot of negative, and those presentations are a part of Florence just as much as raising taxes or annexing land. And it's actually a very positive thing to give out awards and have those presentations. And I quite enjoy them. Not saying anything negative to you, Courtney, but just it's, it's Florence just as much as anything else in this meeting. So I like them, and I think they're nice at the beginning of the meeting and how we have them. Besides, to make people sit through a meeting when they're from Phoenix or somewhere else, if they're here for an award, kind of not cool. That's all I have. Go Gophers.
Councilmember Bucialato?
I just have one thing tonight. I just wanted to just say, if you're not familiar with what's going on in Gilbert right now and in Queen Creek, then I would encourage you to become aware of the Preston Lord case and the Gilbert goons. And in researching it, going down that rabbit hole, I found out a lot of things. And it's 10-plus assaults, and that's just the ones that were reported. One of them didn't even get reported until a couple of weeks ago, and it happened in May. And if you think that these attacks were promoted, or not promoted, sorry, were warranted or provoked in any way, it's not looking like it was their random attacks by people for no reason. And, you know, a lot of our kids go to Queen Creek, go to the movies, go to Fat Cats, do things. So if you think it can't happen here, or if you think it can't happen to you, you're mistaken. So I really wanted to say thank you. I know Michelle and I have been kind of promoting this in town, and I wanted to say thank you to the town staff for lighting it up orange outside. I just always put myself in, in that situation, like what if that was my son? What if that was, you know, all of our kids? What if, what if that was here? You know, what are we going to do? And I think it's conversations that we're probably going to need to start having as we grow. Things are changing, and being the safest, you know, city in AZ. What can we do to stay that way? And what can we do to be aware? And, you know, I think zero tolerance for any of that kind of behavior is the first thing. But anyways, I just wanted to say kudos to Chandler for supporting, because a lot of other towns haven't been as supportive of, of the fight to get justice for that family. I mean, he passed away on Halloween, and they're still trying to figure out what happened to their son. So I just wanted to put that out there and to say, you know, we need to start being proactive as we grow more. So thank you.
Councilmember Cortez?
I guess I 100% agree with Councilmember Bucialato. And I think the part that a lot of parents and community members aren't realizing, and they're starting to realize now, that these are kids that do not all go to the same school. They don't live in the same community, and they, for the most part, didn't necessarily even run within the same group. And they, through social media, have built this group of, of, I don't even want to call them thugs. I just, this group of people that have decided that this is entertainment to them, because that's what it is. They, they view it
that this is entertainment to them, because that's what it is. They, they view it as entertainment. And this is how they get their Friday night kicks. And so just be cognitive of your children, who they're talking to on social media. My son is 18 years old, and I still will look at his phone. I still walk into his room while he's watching YouTube or talking to people. I'm nosy like that, because that's my job as his parent, to be nosy, and to know what is going on in my child's life, and my grandson's lives, and my daughter's life. And when she used to go out on dates, the first thing she had to do was take a picture of the person she was with and send it to me. And she'd get so mad, and she'd say, why? And I said, because if you go missing, I need to know where to start. I need to know who to start with. So yes, keep an eye on your kids, and let's pray for the Lord family. And then on a brighter note, Saturday is the food donation event. I don't know what to call it. Food drive, food donation. We're not accepting donations or anything like that. We're giving out. And that is headed by Mash out of Casa Grande and Mosaic Church here in Florence. Everyone is welcome to come. Again, it will be two semis full of stuff. One semi is a cold truck, so it will have meats and cheeses and who knows what else it'll have in it. But please come if you are a group that collects food or other items for your pantry, or for other group, you know, whether it be group homes, or a nursing home, or anything like that. You do any type of food distribution yourself, please come. Please come and also take part of the blessing. There will be more than enough. And if you want to wait kind of towards the end of the event, so that you can come and take as everything that's left, please do. We're encouraging everybody to do that. I think we are good on volunteers. We've got lots of people that have stepped forward and wanted to come volunteer. The town is even helping us a little bit in letting us use Heritage Park, and helping us just kind of navigate some of the other obstacles maybe we didn't think about, and making sure we have the right traffic flow and all of that stuff. So that's a great event. Our cheerleaders were going to volunteer, but they cannot make it because they will be at competition. So we are excited and look forward to them bringing another trophy home, because they're always very successful at competition. The Chamber of Commerce has quite a few events coming up, so please check their website and their social media. They have a Valentine's dance coming up, thanks to Council member Neal, who desperately wanted a Valentine's dance. So now they're going to host one in his honor. And, and the car show's coming. There's lots of events coming. So please check out their website and make sure that you are participating. And I know we did not get it on tonight's agenda, but please remember that the Women's Club has asked us to participate in their Diamond and Denim, Denim and Diamonds event. So we, as a council, need to discuss that on a future agenda item, so that we can get that decision over to them as well. Other than that, I just wanted to say thank you for your attendance.
I've asked for that to be placed upon our next agenda. Counsel member Maldonado?
I just like to, my heart goes out to the Baker family. Joan Baker was a, a good friend of mine, and she's going to be missed. She passed away two weeks ago. So more to on that, on when her service is going to be, and her celebration life at the American Legion. Also, my heart's go out to the folks that died, and were affected by the, that hot air balloon incident in Eloy on Sunday. I was out there when that happened. And it wasn't, it was very tragic what happened out there last, this past Sunday. On a lighter note, tomorrow is the ad hoc committee for the cemetery at 6:00 PM. Nicole and myself plan on being there for that. And if you're part of that committee, if you can, just look at your packages tonight if you can, or tomorrow before the meeting. And then finally Legislative Day, hopefully be going out to that on Thursday. And I guess, talking to Jeff about that, they said they're going to be talking about transportation. So if there's any issues from the public, if they could just go ahead and email me, I can try to bring that up to some of our legislative folks up there in, in the Capitol. That's all I got. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
This week I attended the East Valley Transportation Infrastructure Committee meeting, and the north-south corridor has been given a number. So SR 505, not official, but it's been given a number. So maybe we'll have some kind of progress on that coming here in the next few years. But that's still moving forward, and that's all I have to report.
This past week, I attended the First Things First Families with Justice System Involvement Advisory Committee meeting, which I serve on. And we are looking at the mission and vision, and what our yearly goals are going to be this year. As we know, we have a large percentage in our population that when we have individuals released, we want to make sure that we are supporting. So this way they have a, a successful start back into their reentry. In addition, we had our Florence Teen Council meeting. I am looking forward to some creative solutions that our Community Services Director should be bringing forward. We had a lot of discussions that focused upon finding ways to engage our teens, our youth. It's been brought to our attention that the library closes at 6:00 PM. And a lot of our teens, by the time they have an opportunity to go to the library, it's closed. They then can only access the internet by a parked car, or in the parking lot, or by one of our buildings. They do not have the opportunity to utilize the maker space that our council supported and brought to life. So they could be creative, they could make things for their projects. They could gather safely in the teen game room. So I know that staff was talking about even opening up on a Monday, but I would like to encourage our staff to look at, you know, evening hours. I do know that from that Teen Council meeting, the teens are wanting to put out a survey that was suggested. And I do think that we need to, as the teens, look at what that survey data is, just to make sure that it would be appropriately utilized. I'd like to also give some challenges to increase our gym membership and mental and physical health with our youth, youth population. I've heard comments anywhere from 13 to 18, to 16 to 26, to 16 to 21. I had Community Services pull the numbers, and we had 66 memberships for ages 16 to 26. So I'd like to challenge you to be creative and find a way to increase that, that number, especially as we're looking at investing in, you know, our multi-generational center, and wanting to have an emphasis on safe, secure places for our youth to engage, as well as overall in the community. Lastly, I wanted to say thank you again for the Make a Difference Day. I think it's really important personally that we highlight everything that happens in the town. And we have a lot of great things that happen in our town. The chambers were packed this evening, and everybody is full of engagement, and they're proud of, you know, what they've contributed to the community, as well as joyful to have participated in it. So thank you for the creation of the awards, presenting them this evening. That was very nice. I love that we used a local vendor as well to create them. I recognized the artwork. So that was fantastic. That is all I have this evening. With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries.